Okay, good evening. It's six thirty sharp and we're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Mated Order and determine if a quorum is present. We have Mr. Joyce joining us virtually, but we do have a quorum in person, so we can proceed. We're going to start with the invocation. Tonight, we have a special guest with us, Pastor Dan Milford from Covenant Presbyterian Church. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Holy God, Creator of everything that is, and one who loves each and every one of us with a tenacious, passionate, tender, unconditional love. We give you thanks for our elected officials, who give so much of their time and energy, their care, their attention, their wisdom, striving to help our community be led forward in positive directions. We give you thanks for concerned citizens who gather together to lift their voices, to listen carefully, to strive to be a part of the process. We give you thanks for all the public servants, the, the staff of the City of Castle Hills, from office staff to sanitation and to police and fire as they strive to protect and serve our community. We give you thanks for the women of the Women's Club and the members of the Garden Club who have done much over their histories to beautify the city and to care for different aspects of the city's life. And so we pray that as we gather together this evening, that you would help quieten us the voice of self-interest in our head that would get in the way of seeking the common good. We pray that you would help us to strive to grow to be a community that cares for those most, most vulnerable in our midst. That you would help us to see your presence in one another and listen carefully for the wisdom that each has to share. So that the work that is done this evening and throughout our time together may be work that brings glory to you. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. First up, we have a presentation to the Castle Hills Garden Clubs. Okay, whereas the Castle Hills Garden Club was founded in nineteen fifty-two as an organization of women dedicated to fostering greater interest in both home and civic gardening and to preservation of our natural resources. Whereas the Castle Hills Garden Club is pleased to be a community partner with the City of Castle Hills through the planning and presentation of its annual and seasonal events, including the Blue Santa Project, the Castle Hills Yard of the Month Award, and Growing Love for Mother's Day. Whereas the Castle Hills Garden Club continues to honor its history and tradition, while also moving forward in the future with renewed commitment and enthusiasm for opportunities to engage, educate, and demonstrate the rewards of diligent effort in the community where we reside. Whereas Castle Hills Garden Club is celebrating its seventy years and still growing anniversary with the announcement that membership is now open to residents of all genders and ages in the community who share a passion for gardening and nature. Therefore, I, J.R. Trevino, Mayor for the City of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, do hereby recognize the Castle Hills Garden Club's seventieth anniversary. Furthermore, I, J.R. Trevino, along with the entire City Council and the citizens of Castle Hills, commend and thank the Castle Hills Garden Club for nurturing pride in our neighborhoods, promoting beautification and environmental responsibility, and giving generously of your time for the benefit of our community. Thank you so much. I think we have some representation here from the Garden Club. If you all want to please come up. Okay, we have one more proclamation, and this one is for the Castle Hills Women's Club. Whereas the Castle Hills Women's Club was founded in nineteen fifty-two as an organization of women dedicated to the betterment and beautification of Castle Hills. Whereas the Castle Hills Women's Club continues to be a valuable community partner with the City of Castle Hills through fundraising and contributing money for a variety of community needs, as well as contributing their time and talents towards countless civic and charitable projects. Whereas many warm acquaintances and enduring friendships have been formed during seventy years of socializing and serving together. And these acquaintances and the friendships have enriched the spirit of the community of Castle Hills. Whereas the Castle Hills Women's Club is celebrating their seventieth anniversary and seventy years of good works, good friends, and good times in Castle Hills, and is moving forward into the next seventy years. Therefore, I, J.R. Trevino, Mayor of the City of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, do hereby recognize the Castle Hills Women's Club's seventieth anniversary. Furthermore, I, J.R. Trevino, along with the entire council and the citizens of Castle Hills, commend and thank the Castle Hills Women's Club for the generosity and all that they've done to enhance and support our community. As many of y'all know, y'all are responsible, along with the Garden Club, for being there, all our ribbon cuttings and being the essential fabric of our city. So thank you all so much. If we have representation here, which I think I see the shirts, please come on up. Thank you.
We're going to speak first, is that okay? And then we'll take a picture. Thank you. Thank you for the honor. We love being a part of the community, and we hope that we'll be here another seventy years. This is a big celebration year for us, and we, our chairman of our seventieth committee is going to give you a little information.
Thank you, Judy. I'm Denise Haley. And ten years ago, when we had our sixtieth anniversary celebration in this room at the October meeting, the ribbon cutting project was born. We were all here in our brand-new shirts. They still look really new because we wear them only on special occasions and not for very long. So they, you know, they, they have aged well. But we met someone who was opening a business here, and we visited with him and said, hey, we're, you know, if you're planning any kind of a ribbon cutting or grand opening, we can come help be part of the team that welcomes you. Well, that's where it started. And that began a collaboration with the city so that when new businesses come, they have an opportunity to check if they'd like to have any kind of a ribbon cutting, and we get involved in that. So it, it's grown in popularity, and I think a lot of the businesses have felt the welcome. And so it, but it's, it's something that we can look back ten years ago and say, it was right here when all of that started. So we're, we're pleased about that. What I want to say tonight is, in honor of our seventieth anniversary, we're going to present, we are presenting a gift of seven thousand dollars to the city. And we're beginning tonight with gift cards, twenty-five-dollar gift cards that we bought at our Castle Hills HEB for each city employee. And the twenty-five dollars is really the smallest of tokens for the appreciation and gratitude that we have for everyone in our city who is so faithful and so dedicated and so helpful to us individually as things come up. But they, they work so hard to help make our city the special place that it is for us to live, and we're grateful for that. So we start with that. And then, as we have done in the past, when requests are received, when people, somebody comes up with a need, and we say, okay, how much is it? And we go from there. So seven thousand dollars is coming to the city during this year. And also, we're also committing tonight ten thousand dollars toward the community project to improve the commons. That gift is a a gift that we received years ago from Mr. Pat Legan. He and his wife Dorothy lived on Sunflower Lane for years and years. They both loved the city. They were both very faithful supporters of, you know, they were kind of the go-to people for things when there was a need, and they, they helped. And Dorothy was a faithful member of the Women's Club and the Garden Club. And after she died in two thousand and five, Mr. Legan gave the Women's Club a gift in her memory that was supposed to be to build a pavilion in the commons and name it after her. Well, at that point, you know, there, it wasn't the time to either make any of those kind of plans and raise that kind of money. And so the money has been there. And now that there is a project underway to improve the commons in some playground equipments, what we heard about, we're not sure what that is going to look like. But when the, when the fundraising begins and when the project is ready, we're ready to stand with our corporate citizens and interested community members and other organizations to be part of that project in honor of one of our longtime favorite citizens' generosity and celebrate the life of his dear wife. So we're thrilled tonight. If you can tell, I'm glad we're taking, we're doing this now because I don't know if I could get it out much, if I waited much longer. So anyway, we're, we're happy to be here, our friends in the Women's Club. If, if you're here tonight and you're not a member of the Women's Club, speak to any of us. It's a great time to join. Anytime's a great time to join, but you can start tonight. See us before we go, and thank you again. And thank you to the City Council and to Mr. Rappleye and to all of y'all. And Judy, some, we have our gift cards here that they're grouped by department. So the department heads, you can take them and, and give them to your, the, the employees on their shifts and whatever with our most heartfelt gratitude and appreciation and thanks. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your generosity and for believing in what we're doing up here. I know that, you know, giving the city the money to do the right thing for the community is, is a big step, and you all work hard to raise those funds. So I, I thank you for trusting in us. Your faith. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. I'm going to ask, and if I get it wrong, please let me know. Ms. Crawford?
Hi, I was just here. Judy Crawford, one oh seven West Castle Lane, not here as a Women's Club member. I'm here to thank the council and the city manager for the hard work that they have done in repairing and upgrading our streets. In the past few years, our city has seen tremendous improvements in both of the, in both the streets and the drainage. As a person interested in my community and the history of this city, I think it's important to look back to the past. Our city was advertised for its tree-lined streets and winding lanes. Dinah Richard, in nineteen eighty-five edition of the Texas Monthly, stated, "Foxholt Lane is considered one of the most unique streets in San Antonio due to its lovely woods, country charm, and unique homes." I live near this lovely street, and I can tell you that more and more people are now enjoying that street since our streets have been repaired and maintained. Since the street improvements, we see more of our neighbors out walking, running, and riding bikes. It is not unusual for us to see people out riding their bikes at lunchtime in our area. We have two guys that come out every day for lunch riding their bikes. Just this weekend, we observed bike riders training on these streets. Since our street improvements, people who enjoy riding their bikes now have a safer, more beautiful place to ride. Antoni and students are back out running and training. They can now do so without the worry of an injury. I am happy that my family can walk on South Winston and Foxholt without worry of injury as well. Back in the nineteen sixties, Dogwood had trees growing in the middle of the street. They were lovely to look at, and most people aware that they were there drove around them. Unfortunately, in the sixties, someone lost their life when they collided with one of these trees. The city council at that time voted for public safety to remove the trees from the middle of the street. This is the job of the council and the city government to ensure the safety and quality of life for its citizens. By addressing our roads and drainage concerns, I feel that that is just what our council and city manager have done. In a few weeks, the citizens of Castle Hills will be able to vote on Proposition A. Voting for Proposition A will determine whether the city will be able to continue with keeping our streets safe or not. Passing Prop A would authorize six million in certificates of obligation that would allow our street and drainage improvements to be completed. I hope everyone goes out and votes to continue this work for the sake of our city and as a nod to the great work that has been put forth so far. As a side note, I think a mayor or city manager bike ride with citizens through the improved streets would be a wonderful celebration of the hard work that has been completed so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Next up, we have Norma McClellan.
Good evening. I'm Norma McClellan, and I live at two oh four Sheffield Place. And I'm here to talk briefly about Fiesta Castle Hills twenty twenty-three. We are looking for volunteers as it is time to get started, planning medals, planning the events, signing people up. And so what I did is I, I'm going to do this. I, Judy prepared a flyer for me. So we're looking for volunteers because it would really help the core committee that we have. Fiesta twenty twenty-three will be held on April twenty-second. And we're looking forward to making that just as exciting as it was this year. So I'm just putting out the information to the community that we are looking for volunteers because the more volunteers we have, the less work we all have to do, but the better it'll make the Fiesta of Castle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jason Smith.
Jason Smith, two oh six Carrollwood. I just wanted to take this opportunity tonight to encourage the residents of Castle Hills to continue our support of the city's efforts to improve our, our streets and drainage by voting for Proposition A. Before moving here, my wife Jennifer and I were frequent looky-loos in the neighborhood. We love the old growth trees, the quiet neighborhoods, and most of all, the wonderful mid-century modern homes. What we weren't so crazy about was driving around on the mid-century streets. Nevertheless, through a combination of fate, lockdown fatigue, and what are now impossibly low mortgage rates, we moved into our forever home in twenty twenty. Living on Carrollwood, we've benefited from the phase-two street and drainage improvements and wish to see other residents enjoy similar results. The drainage project at Carrollwood and Banyon has resulted in a reduction in the height and duration of standing water during heavy rain events, well, if we have had, if we would have had one in the last four or five months, which has been a frequent problem in heavy rain as water tends to rush down our street from the San Antonio side of Lock Hill, Salma. A few blocks to the south of us on Briar Cliff, the city recently completed full-depth reconstruction work, which has smoothed out one of the bumpiest streets in Castle Hills. Both improvements, along with the other work the city has completed so far, not only make our streets safer for vehicle traffic, but also for the many residents who enjoy walking, jogging, and biking in the neighborhood. Although we've only been in Castle Hills for a short time, we've spoken to many long-term residents who have the same concerns about streets and drainage. We, as a community, have been fortunate of late to have a city government that is listening to and acting on these concerns. A successful vote for Proposition A would send a clear message from the people to the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and their respective staff that we appreciate their work and wanted to continue. Just a quick side note for everybody, the early, early voting starts on November twenty-fourth, ends on November fourth, with election day being November eighth. I encourage all my fellow residents to get out and have our voices heard. Now, street maintenance will always be a draw on the city's finances. However, pulling the plug now will only be kicking the can down the road, and we'll end up paying more as our infras, infrastructure continues to deteriorate. Let's all keep the momentum going by voting for Proposition A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Martha Tinker Maschulz.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and allowing me this opportunity to speak. Good evening, neighbors. I hope everyone's doing well. My name is Martha Maschulz. I live at one one two Cotillion Drive. My friends and family call me Tinker, and I'd like to believe that tonight I'm speaking to both. I wanted to speak directly to tonight about this upcoming election. I would like to respectfully request two favors from my neighbors tonight. One, to ask you to use your voices, your vote in this coming election yet again, just as we all did back in May, to pass Proposition A again. As you know, passing this bond will allow the city to continue the progress that was being made and finally addressing our long-neglected street repairs and drainage issues. It's the one major issue that we said we wanted when we voted out the old council two and a half years ago. It's the one major issue that the majority of us said we wanted when we fought, filled out the city survey. And it's the one major issue that we could all really basically agree on because we all recognized that repairing and maintaining our streets and fixing our drainage issues was great for our city because well-maintained streets attract new businesses and new neighbors, and that can only lift up our city's economy. This city's walkability is a huge draw to folks interested in moving here. And we are blessed with these grand, wide streets lined with marvelous homes and tons of shade. And secondly, and more importantly, I'd like to ask my neighbors, actually, it's a plea, a call to action, if I could, to help squash the rampant and harmful dissemination of misinformation by one group's wag-the-dog tactics that are not only wasting our time, but have now cost us taxpayers, citizens of Castle Hills, neighbors, or as someone likes to call us, the golden goose, which I actually love that name, thousands of taxpayer dollars, twenty-five thousand is the starting figure right now, by forcing a petition on us that has forced this new and unnecessary election. Unnecessary because we already had an election, and Prop A passed in May nine hu, eight hundred and ninety-six for a hundred and fifty against. Yet here we are. So I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, neighbors, that from here on out, you get your information straight from the source, the city's website, where you'll find and have access to every public meeting held by this council. No hidden agendas, no secret meetings, at least not from this council. You can hear the meetings live, or you can see them or listen to them later. I listen to them while I'm vacuuming, while I'm washing dishes, while I'm watering. What's vital is that we citizens have access to factual information that we can use to make up our own minds without depending on someone else's interpretation of what went on or what was said. I hit four buttons, basically, to get to the meeting section where I can choose which media I want to hear or watch. That's only two more buttons that need to be pressed that open an email or a newsletter. You go to thecityofcastlehills.com. You scroll down to the bottom where you see city meeting videos. You hit that button. You see a big blue button that pops up that says Ustream. You hit that button, and meetings pop up, and you choose the meeting you want, and you get the information you're looking for. There's a bar at the bottom of the videos that you can slide with your finger to hit the timestamp you want. Here's how I used it. I wanted to find out about the petition, and I wanted to find out about how our cities, about our city's fiscal health. I clicked on the May sixteenth council meeting, and I found out just how great this council has been as stewards of our taxpayer dollars, when at the timestamp of two hours, zero, nine minutes, and sixteen seconds, I heard Mr. Andrew Friedman, managing editor of SAMCO, and this city's advisor on certificates of obligation, explain to Joe Isbrand what a great position this council has placed the city in with regards to our outstanding credit rating, which determines our interest rate. No surprise, voters put Jack Joyce Beck on the council because he, along with the others on this council, worked hard to get us where we were, to get us where we are. I also heard that this petition was really going to cost what this petition, what this petition was really going to cost us taxpayers and just how this petition would negatively impact the future work that was scheduled for our streets. My street was one of those. Something I'd never heard from this previous group responsible for spreading this petition and filing it. On September sixth, here's another example of how I used this website. On September sixth, during the special meeting at the timestamp of twenty minutes and forty-two seconds, I heard Council Is, Isbrand breaking down details of what this same group was calling a tax hike, only to hear for myself, hear the words for myself, that there were no, that was no tax hike as their circulating postcards sent out to targeted citizens suggested, but instead was a small tax reduction. So neighbors, what I'd like is for all of you to ask yourselves, how important is it you, to you to be able to access factual and relevant information, and how important is it for you and to you to have your voice and your vote heard and counted? If you're like me, I won't stand for anyone or anything that keeps me from either. So then I ask you, when one group decides that neither are important to them, how will you respond? Because the filing of this petition, this one action should serve as a huge warning to us all. It should send up a huge red flag for any encounters any of us may have with these, this group in the future because this one action has sent a clear message to us that this group isn't interested in giving anyone a voice or saving taxpayer money because this one action contradicts all of that. This one action was a ruse to buy them more time to figure out their political agenda for this election, and more importantly, the one coming up. And what they're telling us is that if we don't align ourselves with their political agenda, then they will stop at nothing to make sure they get their way. They were, after all, willing to sacrifice our voices, our votes, to overturn a legally-held election that we, the eight hundred and ninety-six people who voted for Prop A, won. Eight hundred and ninety-six for a hundred and fifty against. For warned is for armed, neighbors. Thank you, council, and thank you, neighbors.
Thank you. Next up, we have Armin Babajanian. Your name and address and the, try to stick it, keep it to three minutes, hopefully.
Armin Babajanian, one two two Atwater Drive. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, Chiefs of Police and Fire, and fellow Castle Hill residents. We have a big issue coming up here in just a few weeks. October twenty-fourth is early vote, is when early voting starts, and that's Proposition A. Once Proposition A passes, we'll be able to continue our updates for several streets and drainage that have been outdated and unsafe. We bought our home in Castle Hills over a year and a half ago, and we love our neighborhood and, and our neighbors, most of our neighbors. Our home was built in nineteen fifty-three, but we don't need our roads and drainage to reflect that year. Our street Atwater was updated, and I would love to share the satisfaction that we shared driving, walking, bicycling, roller skating on a street that is updated and new, and share that with those who are waiting and waiting and waiting for their streets to be renovated. I feel so strongly about the quality of life in Castle Hills that we have begun what is now called Citizens for a Better Castle Hills. This is a committee that is chaired by me and Pat C. Martin. We will have a grat, gathering, which the community is invited to, to attend. Everyone is invited. If you have questions, if you're confused about what the specifics are, it's a great place to come and ask questions and also have some tacos and some coffee. October twentieth at eight thirty a.m. at Pandualche. If you'd like to help with this effort, please reach out to me or Pat C. Martin, and please support Proposition A. Thank you.
Thank you. Then last up, we have Ray Schultz. Thank you, sir. Okay. Yes, please. A name, address and three minutes.
I apologize for getting here late, failing to sign in. Douglas Gregory, two, twelve Barcliff Drive. I urge the council to take our reserve funds, which are slightly over three million dollars, and invest sixty percent into five-year treasuries and forty percent into two-year treasuries. They're both over four percent. Reason is this, you have what's called an inverted yield curve going on right now. Normal times, you have high interest rates the further out you go because of expectations of inflation. Lower interest rates closer in. That's a normal curve. It is inverted. You now have high interest rates close in and low interest rates going out. It's signaling a recession. More likely that's going to hit us somewhere in the, somewhere next year. This is a laddering of what we have, and I strongly urge you to do it. It'll be about four and a quarter percent for the two-year and four sixteen for the five-year. If the Federal Reserve doesn't follow through on what it's supposedly going to do, we have time, the two-year bond will mature, then we're able to go out five years from that point. But I would strongly urge the council, direct whoever is doing the monetary management to do that as soon as possible. Second, I hope the bond issue passes. It's just as simple as that. It's needed and it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up. And next up, we have the consent agenda.
Mayor, on the consent agenda, I provided the financials to y'all. And then today, we met with Mr. Gregory, who's the holdover treasurer, and he signed the copies at your, at the dais with Ms. Davis today.
Thank you, Mr. May.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have Ms. Daines, the second, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. First time a new business discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash eleven. An ordinance by the city council of the city of Castles, Texas, authorizing the city entering a contract for election services with Bear County Elections Administrator for the November eighth, twenty twenty-two special election, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is part of the process for having the election. We contract with Ms. Jackie Callen's office to have the election. This is done as far as a joint election to have this special election for the proposition. I did mention earlier this year, the cost of the election, I think, was, and what we budgeted was around seven thousand. And so this one is a little higher cost since it's less entities involved, according to Mrs. Callen's office. So I think it's at a higher cost, closer to ten for the cost of services for the election. So I just wanted to make sure y'all are aware of that. And then ultimately, we would have to do a budget amendment at the end of the year to incorporate the costs on this particular line item. Again, this is the contract for moving forward to have the election with Ms. Callen's office. Ms. Craig, any other items of interest for the item? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash ten dash eleven, as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second, I miss Dan's. Mr. Repley, just to clarify, were it not for the petition, we wouldn't have to pay the ten thousand, or would we still have to?
Well, again, it's the petition forced the election. The election comes at a cost with Ms. Callen's office, so. And it's part of the process.
Mr. Paul?
So we anticipated seven thousand dollars because that's what it's been, but because of circumstances, now it's going to cost us ten thousand, correct?
Yeah, I believe it's in the packet. It's a breakdown. It's a pro-rata share.
It is, okay.
Provided.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knows, because when we have the budget amendment, there, you know, in case anybody wants to know why we're having to do that, is because things have changed. So, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. May, a second by Ms. Dan's, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have a discussion of possible action to direct the city manager to change the city of Castle Hills fiscal slash budget calendar, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is something we talked about during the budget process, I thought. As we began the budget process in July, there was a possibility that we could have done a truncated budget of nine months to get on to a, essentially, what is a regular budget and fiscal process that most other cities follow, which aligns with state, federal grant opportunities and, most importantly, the collection of rad valorem taxes. I thought it was a little bit too early to try to explain, so this process now, asking council to direct myself as city manager to start that process early on, so we can start getting in front of it, educating, and the budget will look different, obviously, as we go through the process next year, which will be nine months. Once that nine month is done, we'll adopt it. Then the following year, we will develop the twelve-month budget, but that will be starting October first. I know this is something that Councilman Isbrand wanted me to get done, and so we're doing this early since we just concluded the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
Mr. Rappley, can, can, would you please articulate, because I think it would be helpful for our residents to understand the significance or the value of shifting the fiscal year in terms of reporting from the county on appraisals, things of that nature?
Well, ultimately, we, from an appraisal standpoint, we get them at the same time. I think from a planning aspect, we get a better idea, because again, when we start the budget process with staff and our finance office, we get a six-month window. Essentially, on a twelve-month window being October first, September thirtieth, we're about nine months in, so we can have a better idea of how we'll develop that budget next year based on expenditures and revenue. It's quite frankly, like almost every other city in Texas and probably the United States. So it's just a matter of getting us to that point. It can't happen overnight, but there is a step to leading us there. But again, to be aligned with fiscal calendars, with the state and federal government, it does open the door for grant opportunities, and most importantly, again, the ad valorem collection. Because we can't really tell in the fourth quarter until the auditors come in and address the audit. But at least now with a October to September thirtieth, we'd get a better idea of the last quarter collections for ad valorem.
So really, this is, enables better planning, better financial planning for the.
Exactly. I mean, it's something that probably should have been done, I have to say, almost a decade ago.
And, and we are one of very few, and perhaps even on our own, in terms of cities, that does not have a fiscal year that runs from October to September.
Yeah, and I mean, again, working in five other cities and working with other elected officials in previous cities or city managers, I haven't found one yet that is a calendar year fiscal budget. There could be one here locally. I have not found one or in the states, but it's better that we move towards that and we educate early of why, because I was a little worried that we adopted the budget this year, it showed nine months, and someone would say, well, why does the budget look so much different now than the previous year? And again, that's a more of educating and understanding that it's a nine-month versus a twelve-month, but we have to take this process first of a nine-month to get on track for an October first budget in two years.
So thi- this is just simply good financial management for the city, not a sexy item, but something that is needed for the city in its financial planning. Mayor and council, I'd move that we direct the city manager to begin the process of shifting our fiscal year so that the twenty twenty-five fiscal year and budget would begin on October first, twenty twenty-four, end on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and we would have a nine-month budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a discussion? Ms. Dan's?
So I just want to clarify for anyone listening that the twenty twenty-three budget remains as is, and that we will have a budget, a nine-month budget from October first, twenty twenty-four to September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty-five budget will be a full twelve-month budget, correct?
We would have to, so next year, we're, we're doing the budget to be nine months, so we.
January first to September thirtieth.
Exactly, exactly. And then we get it adopted, but then we can start the budget process for twenty twenty-five fiscal year, beginning October first.
Okay, but twenty twenty-three budget remains as it's.
As is right now.
Thank you.
Okay, no further comments, questions? This is something that we should, probably should have done a long time ago, but I appreciate the reminder, Mr. Isbrand, and thank you, Mr. Rappley, for seeing it through. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have discussion of possible action authorized city manager to procure rave alert mass notification system, Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, if you'll recall, after the February twenty twenty freeze, we established a city council emergency planning committee that was comprised of myself and Mr. Gregory. We met with the chiefs, the mayor, city staff, over the course of several months to look at planning for the city in better preparation in the event of any kind of emergency and how we communicate with our residents, both during an emergency and in normal times. In the process, we brought, purchased new generators, other equipment to help better enable the city to continue operating. We looked at an interim step in terms of a communication system with, to, to, to communicate with our community, and it served its purpose in the interim. This measure, though, would allow us to step up, if you will, to a system that is very widely used across government. And I will say for myself at UTSA, we use it to communicate with forty thousand-plus people, and it does it very effectively. We have the opportunity to use federal dollars, one-time federal dollars that we, we received, so there would be no cost to taxpayers to be able to put a more effective communication system in place. So via your telephone, you could receive a text message, a phone call, an email in the event of an emergency and/or for general public information such as community events. And we've done the research on this, and I'd like to ask Chief Ladwig if he would give us a brief overview of this and answer any questions that you might have.
Mayor, council, staff. Again, as Councilman Isbrand talked about, this is the system that I had recommended and discussed during the budget presentation earlier this year. It does have many more viable opportunities for us to be able to communicate with our residents. Not only, as was stated, by getting a text or a email, you could also notify individuals through their Facebook accounts, Twitter accounts. It would automatically post to the city website, into the city Facebook accounts. It also gives an opportunity to have many more users. Any particular city staff or administration could actually have access to send out certain notices, either emergency information, street closures, even city events. And on top of that, it would also enable city staff to communicate with one another. If myself wanted to send out a message to just my firefighters, I could do that. Chief Zuniga or Rick Herada could also notify their staff if city manager wanted to notify certain individuals. So again, this has so many more opportunities for us to communicate. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. May?
The rather modest initial price is it. It's one and done, right? We're not talking about a subscription that is every year?
Well, that will, will purchase that in, for the five thousand. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions? Mr. Paul?
Like all electrical systems, there's generally an ongoing maintenance situation. We don't have a maintenance, a yearly maintenance fee on this?
No, no, there's strictly for your, the IT support, which we're going to be paying for anyway.
Now, will the, will the system be controlled as needed, of course, coming out of the fire department?
Well, it, that's, it can have different facets. It can be on my system to notify my firefighters or for the emergency management to be.
I think as a city as a whole, though, if we had an emergency, who pulls that plug? You do?
It can be, that's the thing, is the city manager can do it, I can do it, the mayor, anybody that we designate to have certain access to the emails and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Isbrand, cast a quick question or?
Yeah, of course.
Chief, I know that our existing system, iInfo, has captured some information. Will that be able to transfer over as well?
Yes, some of the information that we already have, any, any resident that has a landline is already part of public record and Rave has access to those public records, so that'll be automatically transferred over. And then, of course, we can put a link on the city website, on our Facebook during events like we had the other night for our national night out. We could also pass out brochures. The residents could come in. It has an app that you can put on your phone or your own computer, and you could actually register through the app if you wanted to. So there's many more opportunities for you to be able to register for it.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Isbrand?
I can't think of anything more valuable that we could do in terms of facilitating communication with our community, particularly during an emergency, and being able to use it in non-emergency situations to help bring the community closer together related to events and activities. Mayor and council, I'd move that we authorize the city manager to procure the rave alert mass notification software.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
Second.
A second by Mr. May. Just a reminder, when we had the September, August, February freeze, we had incidences where people didn't know that we opened up the city as a shelter. They didn't know that we had bottled water given, to give out. They didn't know, and I think what we're doing here is a system that's a little bit better, a little bit more robust to ensure that our residents know that we're doing everything that they need or everything that we can when they need it the most. So thank you, all council. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Next up, we have an update discussion of possible action on an assessment by the police department and the city engineer on feasibility of lowering the speed limit on residential streets within the city of Castle Hills to twenty-five miles per hour. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor and council, back in June, I brought this item up and requested that we ask the city manager and the police chief to begin an assessment of our ability to determine the feasibility of lowering speed limits and the appropriateness of them on our residential streets. I know they've been doing work along the way in the interim. We've had a, a number of other situations come up with residents who desperately appealed to us to move this item forward and to look at it holistically. So I'd like to ask the city manager to give us a report tonight on what has been assessed since that June request and the, a process for going forward on it.
I think, Councilman. Yeah, so the last meeting, obviously, we had Hurwick. The, the traffic engineer through RPS has reviewed Hurwick and Antler as well to designate moving it from thirty to twenty-five. I think in conferring with our traffic engineer and Chief Zuniga, that we wanted to take a section of certain streets in Castle Hills that have thoroughfare connections. So we've designated about ten to twelve streets we're going to look at over the next few months, put the radar trailer out there, get the data, collect it, and then analyze it by the traffic engineer to give us sort of an idea where we need to be for speed across the city. But I think the importance is looking at thoroughfare connections like from Lock Hill to Northwest Military, Northwest Military to West, and then on the South, like Gladiola, for instance, connecting from the access road to Jackson Keller. So they're going to take a section of those and look at those thoroughfare connecting streets and see if it warrants that eighty-five percent to move the speed from thirty to twenty-five to give us an idea of coming back to do a universal speed of whether we stay at thirty or they designate movement at twenty-five. But it's going to take a few months to collect this. I'm hoping to come back in, in, say, three months after he's done the analyzing of the speed from the data and then be able to tell council what the recommendation is, just as we did with her at class meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
And Mayor and council, part of this, of course, is that there's a cost involved when you think about the signage and things of that nature that would be needed, which is why when we, Mr. Rappley and I have the discussion about taking a, a select number of streets, the true thoroughfares that shoot straight through, as an example, from Blanca. as an example, from Blanco to Jackson Keller, in doing assessments there that it could give us real data to work with. So I think the, uh, not really particularly asking for any action tonight, except perhaps a request that uh, we post to the city website. Uh, what those streets would be that we would be conducting this assessment on over the course of the next ninety days plus or approximately, and then have a report come back to the city council either late this year or the early part of next year.
Yeah, and uh, Councilman, I have some of those streets. I can list them right now that we're looking at. Um, being North Manton, Sunflower, Carrollwood, Prince, Briar Cliff, North Crest, uh, East Castle, South Winston, Gladiola, uh, South Manton, Moss, and um, Garden View, uh, to look at speed on those streets and collect the data there. Uh, I think as Mr. Isbrand said, this is a, a minimal cost because we're collecting the data and our traffic engineer is just going to analyze it. So it's a, it's a cost efficient way to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Um, council? We have, do we have a motion? We have a second?
I, I, I don't know that there's a motion required, Mayor. The intention here tonight was simply to update uh, the council on the uh, the discussion we began in June.
Do we have any discussion, council?
Uh, and council from a cost, we, this would just be absorbed in our general engineering light item.
I, the one thing that I want to add, and I, I think I said this before, and I'll say it again, I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope. Um, I could support lowering the speed, but I think when we get into pockets where different streets have different speeds in such a small city, that could be um, perceived as disingenuous, and it obviously makes our officers' uh, jobs a little bit harder trying to know which streets or which speed limits. And hopefully, if it's warranted, I'd really like to see this taken, this approach taken globally within the city of Castle Hills.
And, and Mayor, I think that would be our intention, but by taking a small section, a sampling, it would begin to gather the data from various areas of the city that we could look at to really have a whole picture to, to, to determine the next steps.
I agree. There's no further comments. We will move on. Uh, next up, we have a presentation update on city capital projects. Mr. Rappley?
Huh? I figured out how to do it, which kind of makes me happy from a technological standpoint. So. Uh, I just wanted to run through this pretty quick. Mayor, council, in May, we did a similar type presentation where we listed the capital projects and y'all approved for the twenty-three uh, budget, and I just wanted to cover the streets that essentially uh, we've, we've done banage, uh, excuse me, drainage projects and then future capital. So, and um, like I said, in May, we presented, uh, I presented a presentation which listed current and status of projects and then future projects. As a result, um, you know, council approved that list of projects moving forward. Um, at that time, we were concluding phase one of Banning Carroll, I mean, excuse me, Banning Carrollwood Phase Two Drainage Projects, and we were nearing completion of the street improvements phase one and essentially starting phase two of the street projects. Um, as of today, the streets completed, and I just wanted to give this as a note, um, in talking to our engineers and assessing the poor or uh, less than fifty percent category. As a result, over the last couple of years, moved to decrease the total fifty percent and actually forty-five percent of the streets with an OCI score under fifty have been addressed. So uh, we have a, still have a small segment of that reconstruction category to address. Um, twelve streets remain in that category. And then um, in October twenty twenty is when we received the funding. Uh, since then, we've been able to plan, design, uh, put out for bid, construct the fourteen streets and the Banning Drainage Project. Real quick, I just wanted to highlight some streets that were completed. Um, these all were a part of phase two. These are essentially have been wrapped up. Right now, we actually, yesterday, we did a walkthrough. We're developing the punch list to make sure we close out this project. They're doing some final um, minor repairs or looking at other issues, restoration, grass, those kind of things. And so I just wanted to highlight the three streets here that were part of phase two. This right here, I know it's kind of busy, but I wanted to be able to show in August of twenty twenty on the side where we had the condition map that was up there. Um, this, the red obviously is detailed, the what was considered the reconstruction streets in the less than fifty percent poor category. Um, and then, as you could see, in the twenty twenty, I had our engineers update based on the micro-surface maintenance streets that were done this summer. And then now, as we complete phase two, uh, we obviously see a, a lot more green uh, than red um, as a result of the two years. So going back over uh, phase one, the fourteen streets, the ten that were done in phase one, at the one point nine million have all been completed. And then, as I mentioned, we're essentially closing out phase two, which was the four streets, Briar Cliff, Blewett, Shalimar, and Watlin. And I've combination of fifteen streets have been micro-surfaced over the last two summers, um, as far as the maintenance program. On a minor note, just so everybody's aware, um, you might see some markings on that water. We um, there's, we have our geotext going out to look at, uh, there's a, there's a crack, and so we're having them do a geotech study this week to figure out uh, and determine what has caused that. And um, they are thinking right now, and it might be environmental, uh, because uh, essentially Atwater was completed in, I think, March or April. And so uh, they feel that we have, you know, fifty, fifty days of one hundred degrees, that this might be a factor. So we're going to do a geotech study and then take the approach of how to address that. Um, obviously, we haven't give the contractor back his retainage. And so um, if it turns out that the contractor has to address it, then he'll have to address it. If it's something environmental, then our engineers will provide us a uh, assessment of what to do moving forward. But just want to make that clear, because that's existing right now. It's something we're working through uh, to close out phase one uh, with that contractor. So. Excuse me. Uh, phase two, the drainage projects, as I mentioned, uh, this was completed earlier this year. Um, I believe in July, we finalized it uh, with Saws doing the reconstruction or mill and overlay of that section. And we've essentially gone through the punch list and, and closed this project out. And so our engineers have basically signed off, and we will be providing them their retainer here soon. Uh, and again, if there's something that goes wrong or something needs to be corrected, uh, there's a two-year warranty associated with this project. Uh, next steps, twenty-three. Um, as I mentioned, we still have the twelve steps to close out the full death category in the CIP, uh, which is remaining about three million to close that project category out. And then, under the drainage, we've outlined uh, a few drainage projects for the Mimosa-Crimaria West Avenue Drainage Project. Um, the Carrollwood Extension, uh, the Man, Manton Drainage Improvements, and then the Glen Tower Drainage Project in combination with the city of San Antonio. And we've actually had our engineers figure out what the cost would be for the city of San Antonio. And so um, we've had a series, as I mentioned before, we've had a series of meetings. Um, we, we've gotten to a point, and I won't steal the mayor's thunder. Um, but um, I think we are on a very, very positive tract with giving or assisting funding from the city of San Antonio in this project, which would actually curtail the one point three million for drainage along Glen Tower. This would actually tie right there on Lock Hill for them to uh, fund this project. Mayor, I don't know if you want to mention anything on that?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. So I think it comes as no surprise to everybody here that much of the flooding that we experience is because of the storm waters that run off to the north from the city of San Antonio. And historically, uh, our predecessors have said that we're going to sue San Antonio, that we want to fight them in court and have them take legal responsibility for the water that comes from San Antonio. But at the end of the day, I, I don't see that as a viable solution. Uh, we have Mr. Schnall, which he's a great city attorney, but he's not a full-time city attorney, and San Antonio has over forty or fifty lawyers on staff. It's not realistically a solution that I believe is uh, going to generate the answer that we're looking for. Instead, we're looking at a collaborative solution. When we look to the streets, Glen Tower obviously needed some repair. And so the idea is if we could repair Glen Tower, capture the water that needs to be captured there, but instead of doing that, go and take it a little bit further to uh, Lock Hill and Glen Tower, effectively taking care of an issue that San Antonio has. Potentially, they could pay for it. And so uh, with the city manager, uh, Mr. Isbrand and I have had multiple conversations uh, with city of San Antonio council members, uh, with uh, commissioner. I've had a conversation with Mayor Nuremberg, and they've all expressed initial support pending the ultimate uh, dollar amount, but ultimately stretching our dollars, allowing us to put in one point three and then putting in seven hundred thousand dollars, three hundred fifty thousand from the county, three hundred fifty thousand from the city of San Antonio. And while this not a huge amount of money compared to what we're investing, in my opinion, this is a step in the right direction. This is the initial step to them coming to the table and partnering with us to help fix the problem that we all share. City of San Antonio residents also use Lock Hill-Selma. This is an opportunity where we can work together, fix it. And at the end of the day, three hundred fifty thousand dollars is not a lot to uh, the city or the county that has a three billion dollar budget. So it looks very promising. Uh, this hasn't been included as a part of this because it's not concrete yet. But the intent is that we'll make it happen. And I think, given the conversations, the relationships that we've had and developed and fostered, it looks promising. So.
Um, again, this is a list I've shown previous with the twelve projects for street reconstruction. Um, I'll be working with um, Scott, who will be putting together some informational on our capital improvements page that outlines these projects for FY twenty-three. Uh, and those are the twelve for the roadway and then the four for the drainage. As I mentioned, under drainage project number four, that would be the Glenterra Project uh, in coordination with the city of San Antonio and or Bear County to reduce the total that we would have to put into the project. On that note, council, I wanted to be able to come to you and give you, since it was about six months ago, to say we're, we're essentially closed out many of these infrastructure projects uh, since I last came to you in May. Uh, um, I, I think that um, we've been able to maximize the dollars by being able to do two phases uh, with two different contractors. Um, you know, there, there was some bump in the roads, uh, a little bit. Uh, a little bit lessons learned on a couple of different areas, but I think uh, moving forward, it's um, it's something that's been um, a, a good challenge and um, you know, uh, I think the residents, as you can hear, are happy that they have uh, better roads to drive on and protecting from flooding. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council? Have any comments, questions?
Mr. Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Joyce, I'm sorry. See you. Okay, um, I'm excited for the direction and the bold leadership this council has shown and making improvements that are long overdue. Uh, next up, we have a discussion and possible action on the position or reappoint, our appointment of a city treasurer. As discussed earlier, Mr. Gregory was our previous treasurer and uh, believe our protocol procedure, Mr. Rappley, says that a treasurer must be a city member of council, and so I wanted to bring this to council's attention so that we can get this addressed sooner rather than later and get back onto track. Mr. Schnall?
Uh, it's in the city's investment policy, Mayor. It's in the resolution adopted in twenty twenty. There's a statement that the treasurer shall be a city member of the council, and then included in the investment policy also adopted in twenty twenty is the same statement. So uh, Mr. Gregory, as the city manager pointed out earlier in the meeting, is the current treasurer. He serves in a holdover capacity un, un, until the council takes other action. Based on the existing policy, um, the action would, unless that policy is amended, um, be that one of the sitting members of the council would succeed Mr. Gregory. That policy can be changed, but it's not on the agenda tonight to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. I'm not sure who's interested in taking on this position. I, I know that Mr. Paul has a great deal of financial acumen, but I uh, wanted to encourage council to have uh, an open dialogue here. Ultimate display of transparency, as we believe in. Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, um, well, wh- when we last met on this, um, we were unaware that our investment policy had this written into it. So I think at that point, we were looking at very broadly who in our community might be um, willing to take this on. I think the one thing that we've learned from um, the way the economy is going, the way the economy has been budgeting this process is that um, institutional knowledge is a very important part of um, this role too, of understanding where we've been and where we're going. So I don't know if we're prepared to take action tonight, um, but I do think that that's, that, that's a very important aspect to consider here.
Mr. Paul?
My thoughts are kind of on the same line as uh, Joe. Uh, excuse me, Councilman Isbrand. I think continuity is good if there's no reason to change it. And I don't have a problem with Mr. Douglas, uh, Mr. Gregory, excuse me, Douglas. Uh, so if the city would not lose anything, lose a step or whatever the case may be by holding off a month before we make action, then next month we could change our policy if we cho- so choose to continue to have Mr. Gregory doing it. And Mr. Gregory's day-to-day work experience, I know he is close to these financial aspects, and his job or anybody who's the treasurer of the organization, of, of the city, their job is not to make decisions, it's to bring us options, to bring us alternatives, and not to go to the city manager and say, here's what we're going to do. No, your council makes that decision. But I have no problem with holdover if we've gone this far. Um, can I do it? Sure. Um, I say sure. I've been around finance for quite some time, and I have, uh, we don't know what the future holds. My seat's up for election uh, in May. Uh, so let's take the line of least resistance, whatever council thinks that may be.
Mr. May?
It does seem like the proper answer here is to evaluate changing the policy because the council really needs the best advise, uh, advice on financial issues, whether it comes from here on the dais or out in the community. So I, I guess my preference would be to broaden that policy, so we don't set up a blind spot for future uh, council.
Ms. Daines, Mr. Joyce, anybody have any comments? Okay, um, so I put it out there, Mr. Schnall, Mr. Rappley, I don't know if contain, or continuing with a holdover in light of our position, hopefully um, is causes any problems, but I wanted to bring it to council's attention again to see if we had any movement.
I don't think it's a problem at all. I mean, Mr. Gregory has been supportive of Mr. Rappley. Um, I think Mr. Rappley announced during, before the consent agenda was considered that Mr. Gregory took the time to come in and review and sign off on the quarterly reports that were part of the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Gregory spoke at this uh, lecturn this evening and gave a, a recommendation based on his professional experience. Um, I don't think the city is losing anything if this continues as a holdover um, until the November. Um, until the November meeting, at which time, um, we can present a proposed uh, revision to the investment policy, um, to take up the ideas that, that I think all three, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Paul and Mr. May have articulated.
Okay. If there's no action, uh, we will continue on. Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on the to create a Castle Hills Economic Development Committee, Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As you recall, um, Councilman Joyce brought this forward last month as far as working to establish this committee for economic development. And I believe you have a copy in front of you developed by Mr. Schnell, which sort of has a charter. Uh, city council asked to come back with a charter, um, for discussion and action or additional feedback from it. Um, but at this point I will also let Councilman Joyce, uh, um, speak on this because essentially this is his, his item. So.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, obviously this is something that, uh, is really, really important. I see this as a long-term project and one that will ultimately help enhance our city's revenue. Uh, there are a number of points there that suggest the need for economic development. And I feel very sincerely about all of them. So I, I think this could be a, a, a team of people, if properly chosen, that could really be a big help to our city as we look to the future with, uh, revenue challenge. And, uh, so the, the second piece of this, the first piece, of course, is just, uh, taking action on whether or not we should have an economic develop, excuse me, economic development committee. The second piece is the charter. And, um, I, I thank Mr. Schnell for, uh, guiding us on how that might be put together. And, uh, you may recall that Mr. Schnell's comments was that the, in terms of providing the committee members, it's probably best that each council member appoints a committee member and that committee run concurrent with the council members. And so that makes a lot of sense. And I do recall if, uh, if memory hasn't failed me that, um, our members of the economic development committee don't necessarily have to be Castle Hills residents. And so, um, anyway, I, I think it, it makes a lot of sense. And if I may, when respect to item six point seven, move that we create a Castle Hills Economic Development Committee.
Oh, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Uh, thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Schnell, a quick question. Um, can Mr. Joyce make a motion considering that he's participating virtually?
Yes, he's, as long as he can be seen and heard
Okay.
by all present, and as long as there is a forum present in the room, Mr. Joyce is participating remotely, and that's permissible, uh, under chapter five, five, one of the Texas, uh, government code.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Uh, we have a motion in a second. We have a discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Uh, next up, we have discussion, possible action to adopt a charter for the Castle Hills Economic Development Committee, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor Council, this is again the, the charter that was developed by Mr. Schnell in conjunction with Mr. Joyce. Uh, as far as, um, what the, uh, charge and mission would be of this economic development committee. So I would entertain, uh, you should have a copy in front of you on the dais. Committee Charter. Okay, um, so if, uh, you had any questions, thoughts or input, um, I think it would be happy to incorporate into this charter moving forward. Uh, again, I tend to lend it to Mr. Joyce, see if he has any additional comments on this charter, because I know he's already looked at it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Joyce?
I think it's a really, it's a really good go-by for any committee, I think, to, to take on their effort. And I'm grateful to Mr. Isbrand and some of the members of the, uh, Castle Hills Business Association for helping me put these thoughts together. But I, I think it really makes a lot of sense and will provide a, a good roadmap for this team to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Isbrand?
Uh, if I could just ask a question about this, um, so what this does not do is establish our, uh, process for, uh, appointees or members, things of that nature. Is there another step in this process that would come after the adoption of the charter?
Um, yes, it really would come, Mr. Isbrand, after the creation of the committee.
Okay.
Um, the, the council has voted already to create the committee. The, the order would be create the committee, then set out the, the council's vision for the committee, which is what I tried to do um, in the committee charter. And as you'll see, this, the, the, um, the six points in the charter itself are really adapted from the document that Mr. Joyce presented at the last council meeting when this was asked to be brought back. Um, and I thought that, that they provided a good framework. Um, the main thing that I added it was at the end, um, and although I reworded it and, and took some things out and put a few things back in, that was very important for this committee to give at least semi-annual reports to the city council. Um, so that's what item number six is. In terms of the, um, the criteria um, and the methodology of selection of committee members, we can bring back and implementing, um, resolution to that effect. Um, because it's a committee, um, it's somewhat optional as to whether it's done by resolution or ordinance. Um, it, 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 from Mr. Joyce's comments earlier, I think, um, he sees this more as a ongoing rather than an ad hoc process, um, that would lead us to consider an ordinance perhaps rather than a resolution. But in order to get it kicked off, um, my recommendation would be if everyone is comfortable with the charter, um, approve the charter tonight, and then we will bring back to the council at the November meeting a, a resolution that sets out the, um, criteria or selection. And we'll track what's in the zoning ordinance about the zoning commission and the board of adjustment. What's in the, um, ARC ordinance on the appointment to the architectural review committee? Because those, those processes seem to have worked very well. The crime control and prevention district, however, is covered by a different chapter in the local government code. And so, um, it would be a little bit more complicated to change that appointment. But we can make these read more or less like those others where each council member appoints a committee member. The mayor can designate the chair of the committee. Um, the council may as a whole, um, appoint a couple of alternates. Um, and as was referred to, I think by Mr. Joyce, um, the, um, count, the terms of the committee members would be co-terminus with the, uh, term of the council member that appointed them. Um, and, um, that, that's something we could bring back for next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Schnell for that clarification. Thanks to you and, uh, Mr. Joyce for your excellent work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a motion? Did you make that already, Mr. Mayor? Is that the last one? Okay, do you have a second on that? Is that right? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have announcements of mayor and council members on items of community interest, Mr. Isbrand.
I'm sure there'll be lots of thanks that will come from the council tonight for all the activity that's taking place. I'll just do a forward-looking one instead and remind our residents that this Saturday is our heavy bulk trash drop-off collection here at City Hall between ten AM and two PM. Those things that, uh, the, the sanitation crews can't pick up, uh, on their regular collection, you can bring up here on Saturday and it will be taken care of. It's one of the things that I constantly hear from residents they ask for, so please take advantage of it the Saturday, ten to two.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul?
Again, I find myself in a position thanking the, uh, women's club, thanking the homeowners, uh, Castle Hills, uh, community organization for all the efforts and all the things that they've put in. I know this last, uh, it seems week ago tonight, a national night out, there was a lot of effort in the, put forth and, uh, it pretty much brings the community together. Um, there's pros and cons having them in front of the house. Some people still had some in front of the house. That's great. They had their neighbors and, uh, but I really appreciate what went on here. And I want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. May?
Just wanted to note, uh, the theme tonight really is about community and it's not just about the seventy-year-long traditions that have meant so much to everyone that lives here. Uh, we now hear word of additional, uh, organizations that are burgeoning. Uh, organizations to make this community better, to push forward our business association and, uh, all those allied things that make this a real community. This is what I signed for, I think, twenty-eight, twenty-nine years ago now. And I just want to let you know it's such a privilege to be able to serve this community.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank again the, uh, the speakers for this evening. Uh, they spoke so articulately in favor of our city and with positive comments and looking toward hopefully a positive vote on proposition A. Thank you all for your wonderful comments. Uh, thanks to the women's club for their amazing generosity to our, uh, community garden, to the commons and, uh, their generosity to city staff. And I'd also like to thank the citizens for a better Castle Hills, one of our newest organizations, for the wonderful work they have begun to do on advocating for the passing of, uh, proposition A. They've already established a website and determined a very coherent, uh, argument. So, uh, my hat's off to the citizens for better hills, for better Castle Hills. Thank you all for the work you do.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
I just wanted to, um, thank all of the volunteers that came out last Saturday morning for the litter pickup. I think we did an amazing job. I, I have enjoyed driving around all my commutes this past three or four days and seeing how much cleaner and nicer everything looks. And, um, I personally had fun doing it and I just thank everybody who was able to come and help.
I want to thank council and, uh, city staff for having such a productive Saturday. I think, uh, from the shredding to picking up trash across the city and we even accidentally partner with, uh, the Northwest Rotary Club who is picking up trash from Northwest Military. So we'll have to purposefully invite them out next time, hopefully, uh, just before the spring and it gets warm. Thank you all so much for, uh, being the best part of Castle Hills. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just for myself, um, I say thank you from staff. Uh, this is a team effort. Um, they do all the work and they make it look easy for me. So I appreciate you, um, providing this generous gift and recognizing their work and time for the city. So I thank you.
Mr. Rappley, yes, ma'am. Ms. Danes?
Is there a meeting this Saturday morning of the parks? Is that correct?
No, that got postponed to October twenty-second, I believe.
Perfect. Uh, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. May, or Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we adjourn. This is delightful.
Do we have a second? Ms. Danes, uh, all in favor? At least I want to stay unanimous. Thank you. Uh, the meeting is adjourned seven fifty-four. Everybody have a good evening.